So, item number two on the subject updates. Sutter Buttes Fire is breaking and emergency management update. So I'm gonna turn that over to John Schellwitz of Fire Department. So while they're setting that up, I'll point out our unofficial goals for the next few months. You see it right there. Right, Ken?
Okay, so while we're making some adjustments, we can go ahead and kick this off. Good morning. My name is Brenda Howell. I'm the Emergency Operations Center for Sutter County.
Uh, John Schellwitz of Fire Department.
We're going to do a presentation today on, uh, and summarize what happened in the Buttes Fire. We're gonna kick it off with some incident management details and then we'll go into some breach lessons on that incident. Okay, go for it.
Okay. So, uh, we're gonna go, as Brenda said, we're gonna go over my walk-in talk, so I probably won't be here. I'm a little old showing you the map. Hopefully that doesn't hurt anything to your soul. So I'll talk loud. I'm good at that sometimes. Uh, so basically, uh, we're gonna give this overview. This is a picture of a professionally taken, the night, uh, the first night of the fire. Is it kinda here? Yeah, don't do that. So basically, this is a professional picture taken of the Buttes Fire. Um, and I'd like to go into one thing first, and a lot of questions have come out since the incident, about how the fire department names fires. And there was some confusion from the social media and some of our employees, how we name fires. And the fire department usually means geographic, by where the fire is, or often a road that it starts on. But, um, there was questions about the Cal Fire. The Cal Fire started off car power off Road, off Highway 299. That's why it's called the Cal Fire. It wasn't an actual car fire. It was something else. But, so that's how that goes in start. With the Buttes incident, um, there was a lot of confusion. In the beginning, people thinking this fire was in Buttes. We called it Buttes, and they called it Sutter Buttes. We called it the Buttes Incident to make it very simple, and that's the reason that we did that. So, without killing a bit, of course, that's why we named that place. So, on an incident overview, this is actually pretty early. This picture here was probably within the first hour of the fire starting. The fire started Tuesday, July 31st, at about 5:00 in the afternoon. The fire started, uh, east side of 11201 Pass Road. Okay, if anybody doesn't know what that is, it's just over the pass, on Pass Road. We're just over the peak on Pass Road and between that road and Rockville Canyon Road. I'll kinda show you on the map where that is. So basically, that fire started, uh, your fire services were actually on another fire at that time. Uh, we were all in the South County, part of the South County, uh, just south of Maxwell. Our hospital station on Maxwell Road, actually, on Sutter Fire. All of our resources were fitted down there when this fire was reported. Uh, so we had challenges right off the bat. Obviously, everybody knows California's in the wildfire season of history. Uh, we've seen some of the largest fires in history in the past year. Uh, two of the largest fires in the state of California that happened was in the past 12 months. So, we're now seeing, we're gonna get hit with these things too, uh, in the Buttes. So, basically, um, when the fire started, well, first few units, we had, uh, help from Meridian Fire Department. They were in quickly, got in there, and the fire was, they said initially the size of a bus when they first got there. Uh, I was about, mm, I don't know, eight minutes behind that first unit. And as it said right there, it was already about 60 to 100 acres with the eight minutes. Um, the fire was being wind driven, it went up the hill pretty quick. And immediately, the people can see here, right there, those are our big communication towers that are in the Buttes. Um, very large infrastructure, not just further than the county, uh, for state level, federal level, emergency, emergency responders have a lot of their stuff over here. Cal Fire, uh, DVA, CIA, FBI, a lot of stuff up there. Uh, huge site, very important for us to make sure we didn't burn that down. So immediately, that was my priority, to make sure that we did not lose that, uh, and trying to re-rep that fire. Uh, as the fire grew, obviously, uh, I'll explain something about Southern County. We're different than almost, well, we're different than any other county in the state except for one other county, which is San Francisco County, when it comes to fire operations. Um, Cal Fire, uh, because of the state fire agency, has responsibilities in every county except for Southern County and San Francisco County. Meaning, they don't have, I don't have that resource in my pocket to unlimited, just make unlimited orders of resources. So we had a challenge from the get-go. Um, getting the resources here the financial way of how we need for those things. Um, but as we get to the end of this, uh, this incident, it would've been well over $2 million to run this incident. This was, and this was only an damn half an incident. So we have a lot of resources, we got a lot of help on that. But, basically, so that you understand, we have to request resources very specifically, how we do it. Uh, and they don't have to give that to us, because we don't have Cal Fire here. They don't have any responsibility here. The only small piece of property within the county that is actually a state-owned property is in the very dead center of the Buttes, it's called Peace Valley Park, and that's run by the state parks. And we actually, as Southern County Fire, have a fire contractor that, Cal Fire has little responsibility in that. So we're already up against a lot of challenges right off the bat. Uh, obviously, there was staffing issues within our fire department, myself. Uh, we'll be at, trying to fill positions, and also, we run very thin with the level of staff that we have in our department, uh, which is something we're trying to work forward to find out how we can fix that issue. With all the ABCs that were in the county, um, as I put directionals to board and updates, the public fires going, I had two strike teams out, which is five engines and a strike team leader on different fires. We were all fully staffed, meaning we were not at a situation where those strike teams being out influenced how many people we could get into the Buttes and why we caught this fire, why it took so long. So they had nothing to do with that. Uh, so we made that out there. So basically, as the fire moved through, uh, can't get bigger, I did records requesting sources from Cal Fire. Uh, and as people saw, probably through the internet, uh, we had, uh, aircraft, we had helicopters, more air tankers. Uh, it was called air tact, it's basically a boss in the air. Uh, and I got a lot of ground resources from, uh, Cal Fire, helped with the overhead level, which is my level, more of the command level stuff. Uh, worked great with the, as you can see right here, taxiing with the, uh, Sheriff's Department. Uh, a great response from our dispatchers, they were very overwhelmed, as you would only imagine. Um, the Sutter Buttes, obviously, is the center of Southern County. Everybody looks to the Sutter Buttes, and when you see a large smoke coming out of the Sutter Buttes, obviously, everybody in the public is concerned about that, because it's our fire. So, a lot of calls coming into the public communication center. Uh, they were able to get me a command man, which is, uh, jointly staffed by our staff and the Sheriff's Department, uh, which was a great resource, um, and I'll get into a lot of the thank yous here in just a little bit. But as the fire increased, uh, we moved into a situation where the fire went up, started going up towards the towers. We attacked the fire from the air very heavily, it was a very remote fire for us to be able to access to. Not good access on this fire. Um, this fire grew greatly because we couldn't even make access to it. We had to watch it burn a lot of ground. The good thing about when this fire burned, not many homes, not many, uh, infrastructures set for the towers, the towers, sorry, the towers up here, and multiple gas stations, or gas stations, gas wells, sorry, um, that are in the Buttes. But we really, we had a gas hub, and we really didn't have anything out in front of it. Wind shifted, about right in the middle of this fire, the wind shifted, and there's four residences to the, right here. If you can look over on the map, four residences to the west on Pass Road, which immediately, this fire started burning this way, towards the west, so it went off this picture, this way. Um, which changed what was going on in this picture. As you can tell, the wind blowing it that way, if you had this picture bigger, you'd see a big fire over here. Um, pushed off that way towards Rockville Canyon, we were concerned, and at that point, uh, with the help of the Sheriff's Department and UCBD, we were able to get, uh, officers in there immediately to evacuate the four residences off Pass Road, and then also do advisory evacuations up Kellogg Road in case we had a wind shift to the east, and also off west view on the far west side. We were able to give them advisory. Um, and as we talked about during the floods, do you want to go over the advisory versus? Okay, okay, so everybody understanding what's the difference between mandatory and advisory. Uh, we've been at a great topic for the past two years of how, what are evacuations and how do you say it? Mandatory evacuation is get out, and it's your responsibility to get out. You have to admit it, danger to you, and that's why we say that. A evacuation advisory was more put in the role to, we have a problem, it could affect you, we want you to be ready to go at moment's notice. If you want to leave, we highly suggest it. That's where advisory comes in. So for everybody who understands.
And I think it's important to mention too with the mandatory evacuations is, once we call for those mandatory evacuations, we cannot physically force people from their homes, but we do have the authority to not let them back in. So sometimes people think that when we call for mandatory, because we do go house to house, we call, we post on social media, but we can't make them leave their homes, unfortunately, so we saw that over the weekend in the fire, the holy fire is ordered to go to the murder site, meaning lots of residents decided to stay with very active, positive fire. And it was something that, that's also an important thing.
And they also noticed the sort of things you see happening with the fire this year, where people not taking advice and being. So, uh, as the fire progressed, we had resources from numerous departments. Uh, I tapped into what's called the Master Mutual Aid Agreement. It used to be called, was called the Seven Points of Life Agreement, if anybody's ever heard of that. Basically, the way that works, emergency services, since I do not have Cal Fire within our county, I gotta have some link to get resources here to help the citizens, homework, over for over tasks. So, I requested the resources, like I said, through that agreement, uh, they were able to provide me a lot of resources. Uh, we were able to get resources about Sacramento County, which was a break. Uh, great, great response, uh, out of other departments. So basically, this fire, as you can tell over here, went big, alright? The more I said it started, we started to grow up. Initially, uh, the fire grew about rate, about 300 to 400 acres per hour. It was moving at a pretty good clip. Uh, started to die down that night. Uh, we initially had put it at 2,200 acres, and this is another line of concern that, uh, people were very, uh, vocal about. Is initially put it out, it was 2,200 acres, and then the next morning it went down to 800 acres. That's very common in fires, very common, because what happens is that fire was covered in smoke, and they're trying to judge that from an aircraft. And so they, they tried to block the fire as they thought was, until the morning, we got a really good picture of it, uh, we then figured out the actual parameters of the fire, we're able to figure out the full size. Um, initially, it says here 2,200 acres, at the end of the fire, it ended up with about 1,240 acres. We saved, we call it 1,200 acres. Uh, 1,247 is the exact, uh, number of acres. And we contained it at 2,100 hours on the first. Um, during that time, uh, well, and the last part, that fire is currently under investigation on Cal Fire. It was suspicious in nature, and we will do work to make sure we get a cause of. Um, so with the fire, again, too much of the exact what took place in the fire, um, I'd like to get into, this is the key part. The fire agency, what we saw from surrounding agencies, our public, and our other divisions in this county, it was amazing. Uh, I couldn't ask for better support. Southern County, UCBD, Marysville, Linda, Alters, Meridian, Maxwell, Sap River, East St. Louis, Love Grove, New Orleans Forest Base, Sacramento Metropolitan, Sacramento City, consumed this fire, which is Love Grove. Cal Fire and Cal OES all had resources within the county, and we didn't pay one cent for them. They were here to help brother out. So that, that's, that's very respectful, extremely high levels support. Supporting agencies for us, obviously, by some of the ambulance, ready job. Uh, when we did displace the four people, Brenda will kind of go over that, we did have, uh, did initially open a, it's a back agency center, uh, Southern High School. They were very nice to everything open, and Reddick Hall started that with us and Brenda and some of that stuff. County departments, uh, Sheriff's Office, I cannot thank them the most. They were extremely supportive from the side of just trying to keep the people out of the Buttes, uh, and keep them, us do our operation with their traffic control, to the evacuations, uh, and to the logistical support with, uh, communications and obviously the, uh, command man that currently we have with the county. Uh, general services, my communication, uh, within these incidents is, I have something to do in the field, and I communicate with Brenda and the CEO, the office of PIOs, uh, on the side. And Brenda, can I go into that?
So with the county departments, because, um, they're typically called into the Emergency Operations Center, but with a fire like this, because it's not Cal Fire jurisdiction, we also, the EOC, needs to support the incident itself. So, the county departments not only supported us at the EOC level, they supported all the operations that were going on um, at the command post, such as like quarter potties, um, the command van, um, staffing, road closures, road apartments, sheltering, human services staff, things like that. So, we're used to, I'm used to, when Cal Fire comes into an incident, they bring all of that stuff to support the incident, and then I can deal with the county level stuff, the human services, the public health, the media, um, social media, all of those things that we need to, briefing our elected officials and things like that. So, the county departments provided a ton of support to us that night, and we're really appreciative of that. And then also the private support. The private support was really great, because they started feeding people on their own. Um, the citizens came out and really wanted to support the fire command post, and they did that. They ate dinner, they ate breakfast, they brought coffee, uh, they were gonna run equipment if we needed them, although we couldn't do that, but they were there to support, um, willing, willing to support us there.
It's the first time I saw 300 of those pieces. And it's still a lot, there was 300 pizzas there.
Uh, and then lunch the next day, and of course, By County doesn't have to stage there. By County animals staged there with a full crew to make sure that everybody was really had, had food, had water, had ice, packed lunches for the incoming crews. And so, when we, we have crews coming in on mutual aid, we need to be able to support them, and that's exactly what we were able to do.
And that's really key to remember, from a financial standpoint, is, the citizens really came through and saved us financially in this, in this fire. Um, different agencies, man, Rolling Stone Pizza came out and served over 260 pizzas. Um, let me tell you, inmate on a fire crew has never been served a pizza, and they did. They got pizzas, and they were custom pizzas. They want to come back to Southern County. I'm talking to Jeff, but, uh, you know, you spun a lighter on there. But, very seriously, the, the public, and we have multiple thank yous going out to these people that, uh, that assisted us. We wouldn't have been able to do it without them. And without financially, we would've seen a larger financial hit had we not given support from the public. So very important that we recognize our public and how we came together as a community.
Right, so, so before, so we learned some things that night. We learned some things that night, especially me. This was the first incident, real incident, I had gone through here since coming on with the county. Um, I'd heard all the stories about the orginal disaster, but I actually got religious, so this was a good lesson for me. But first off, we have to just, um, acknowledge what went well. And John's talked about it already, but I won't mention it again, it was the cooperation internally and externally. At my level in the EOC, the coordination and the communication is the number one thing that we do. We provide coordination, we provide resources, and technical specialists to the field forces. Um, so when we call, they came. That's important. Um, I don't know that, I know that other jurisdictions sometimes have issues with that, so I was happy, very happy with that. Um, our communications with dispatch in those initial hours were critical, and those public safety dispatchers were there for me. My only touch to the incident with John for those first couple hours was through the dispatcher. And so, that was, that was super, um, helpful to me to be able to relay information in our, um, operations center and then push it out. The use of the command van was a huge support for John and how the staffs and quickly that had dispatched from the Sheriff's Department out to the field was great. And so I think those command van exercises that the county staff has been doing every quarter are well worth their weight in gold. And then, uh, we had a lot of support from the city of UCBD. City of UCBD really helped us out a lot. Uh, I know on the fire side, they helped out Chief Shallowes, and then on my side, coordination of information, just to relay what was going on so that they were kept in the loop. And then lastly, as far as what went well for us, and I'm sure there's many more, but I'm just taking some of the highlights, is that coordination and the relationship between Chief Shallowes and my office. If we don't have that kind of coordination and that relationship building of our field, then I'm not gonna be able to do a huge, a good job with the county. It's gonna be tougher for me to do. So, um, so those were the lessons, those were the, what went well. Um, lessons learned. Um, professional radio communication staff supports public safety department. So we have a very intricate radio system here in Southern County, and I'm gonna let John talk about that. But, one of the things that we're really gonna need to start looking at is to employ somebody that can help us maintain that system, so if you want to understand that.
So basically, what we did is, we took advantage of this incident, to be able to go through an after-action report, uh, and sat with the department heads that were involved, and the major players that were involved in this incident. And we were able to take down some things that we learned, uh, some things that went well, and things that really didn't go so well. Uh, communication is a challenge. Obviously, in an area like Sutter Buttes, it's very hard. You would think there's a huge radio tower on the top of the Buttes, and we would have great communications. We have some of the worst communications once we get into that area. Uh, and where this first, first safety comes out, we prove it, we have a professional radio communications staff. Uh, we're, we are definitely in need of this. A lot of counties, uh, employ a public safety, radio communications person. Not necessarily just for public safety, but they do radio communications within the county, um, through Public Works. Anybody who has any type of communication systems, they manage those. Uh, we have a very intricate system that's based off of use, which is called the Interoperability Program, that we can actually talk to any agency. After 9/11, one of the things that came out after 9/11 is that police, fire, uh, emergency services, Public Works, all couldn't talk to each other. They were all doing their own thing, and it was empty. Whereas we have, we do have that capability to do that. When that command man came out, I was able to start patching those things. We did have some issues, had to call more staff in, where if we had this person in place, this would be their job to manage that system. That system is very important also, because it allows a lot of us to get grants, um, when you have that system in place. When you don't have that type of system in place, you're not necessarily qualified for a lot of grants if you don't have. Uh, we looked at having a dedicated hotline for the citizens. Uh, we looked at the dispatcher being overwhelmed, we looked at Brenda being all overwhelmed. Um, if anybody in the stream tried to call me on my personal cell, I'm sorry, I threw it across my, my truck, and I never answered it for two days. Uh, I believe my, within the first hour, my phone was full. So, we see that, and we need to find a way to stop that type of communication. Where we take those communications, not that we don't give information to the public, that we find a place to put that in one central place, and we get good information, quality intelligence, not good information, and not rumors out to the public. Uh, and that's very important that we do that.
And we're working with IT, and that's something that we can do very quickly here, and we'll be getting that out, getting that, and running shortly over the next couple of weeks. Uh, the other thing that, um, was very apparent to me here is that we need to have more people trained on social media, and social media communicators to just monitor the traffic and provide updates. Whether there's anything to update or not, we can say that. We can say, you know, there isn't an update to contain another fire at this, at this time, but we'll give you an update in the next hour. So Chuck and I are gonna be working on that over the next several months to conduct some of that kind of training, and then just recruit internally. People that we can call into the operations center and come in and just manage social media, uh, so that we can provide more information. That's another way to get information out, and in this world today with social media, we have to be in front of it. Um, and then recruiting the field response PIOs. Um, Chuck was in the field early, as soon as we called for him, he was there. Uh, however, we need more PIOs. This was a small incident, if we have another orginal spillway, or if we have floods this winter, we're gonna need more people that we can dispatch out to the field. So we're gonna look to our public safety departments internally into the county, um, and then look at our cities, ask them for people that we can call up, and then, um, kind of dispatch out to the field. From a public safety standpoint, it's very important that those that respond out, that they'll understand public safety and can speak that language.
It's really important for everybody to understand that a lot of these incidents that are going on in the state, each fire has 20 to 30 PIOs on that fire. Um, they are, it's a very, uh, very, that is something that is now just growing in the public information officer levels, of what the information, the public is always more and more demanding. Every time we have more and more emergencies, people want to know. Uh, and they always want to know information faster than we can get it out. And there's always a lot of, um, questions to the incident of what we need to do. Chuck did a great job. I, I owe him an apology, because I was not able to get information to him, I was overwhelmed in the beginning. Uh, but he stood by me, and we kept coming up and asking for information, and as we got it, we tried to dig out the link as much as we possibly could. Um, did a great job on an internal interview with the news, kept the news off my back, thank you for that. Uh, I was a little overwhelmed. But anyway, that public, that field response PIOs is something that we're gonna be looking to, you know, you don't have to be a fireman, you don't have to be a police officer to do this job, you just have to know how to talk to people. So we're gonna be looking to the different divisions to assist us in the emergency management, because it doesn't have to be just for fires, it could be anything.
And then lastly on this one, what are the expectations of the staff, so us, from our elected officials ahead of conference? Uh, we really want to get that nailed down, so that we can meet those expectations moving forward. So we know what you expect from us, and then we can try to deliver that to you. Um, so just, uh, to, do you want to? Alright, so I'll cover this a little bit faster. So, again, peaking with the theme of getting out information faster to the public, we're working on it. Uh, we're getting ready to purchase executive contract for a warning system that will help us do that much quicker. If I had had that in the EOC that night, I could've reached out over multiple phone lines, multiple text messages, and notified everybody that there was a situation going on in the Buttes. Um, wildland firefighting potential contract?
One of the things that we address that is, is we don't have that Cal Fire, it was, is looking at possibility, we're gonna be entertaining that with our neighboring Cal Fire unit, to see what it would do to put a Cal Fire, uh, agency agreement to be able to protect the Buttes. Uh, that gets us the, the whole panel, of all these PIOs, everything we would need, possibly, if the, if the wildland situation was to take off in the Buttes, uh, we would be able to call to them. It is a financial thing, contract, and we'll have to, if you want, we can go through with it.
And then an improved webpage, our Southern County webpage, um, implementation of our GIS, which is Geographic Information System, it's basically mapping. We're gonna put real-time mapping up on our webpage and, um, social media, so that the citizens are fully aware of what's going on in real time, as, as, we've already developed that, we've got. And then lastly, we're considering looking at having a, what I'm calling a Forward Emergency Operations Center, somewhere downtown in our civic center offices. So then if we have a smaller scale incident, we can activate it there, rather than going out to Sutter. And then, oh, go ahead. Both looking forward, so what can you expect from our offices in the coming year? Um, we're gonna do more training, we need to train more people, we need to practice as well. So we're gonna do some exercises, uh, where we get together and go through a scenario, and talk about how we could go through that incident. Um, we talked about the staff, we're updating emergency plans. The plans haven't been updated in this county for several years, so one of the big charges that my office has is to update those plans. Uh, we secured a grant with the Department of Water Resources, uh, for about $800,000, and we'll be kicking off that project later on this year to work on flood response planning. And also, there's an evacuation plan components of that, um, and then also flood fight with our reclamation list. So to improve those relationships on how we're going to respond to flood disasters. And then just continued relationship building within the operational area. Uh, when I got here, one of my first charges was that we need to build relationships with our partners, and I think we're doing that. And I think we're doing that. We work very closely with UC City right now and they're, they've been a huge asset to us.
There we go, that's presentation. If anybody has any questions, obviously we're pretty for time here today. Feel free to contact me or Brenna at our offices. We're happy when you sit down and discuss any questions important.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I can look at, I think it was a first-class officer. So, I mean, yeah, there's some issues that we need to address in view of professionals who are addressing it in the county. One of my biggest questions is that, oh, I've seen the fire. With all the communication towers that are up there on the officer, do we ever have any preventative maintenance programs that will clear off any of that stuff around there and say, hey, the burns up there, it's not gonna touch those towers at all?
So that is a part of the young area that, well, to tour communications. In great communication with Jake Clay, who runs that from the Lusa area. He was actually there for the fire. Very appreciative of probably what we did not do damage. We gave very little damage to the towers. Actually, it was more like we burnt up some railroad jobs that were, that's really what we burned. That's a very little damage to some internet stuff that's up there. Yes, I discussed that with you. And we're moving forward with the plan to actually get some wildland clearance around those. It's a very challenging site, it's, it's the backside of it is a cliff. To get it clean, people have to go on rots and use chainsaws. And it's, it's going to be a very hard project, but yes, Jake is, is willing to work with us to make sure we can get those towers protected.
If I had any fire, because, you know, I've been here with this for a long time, for years for it all the time. But is there any fire outreach that goes on with the citizens of the guns that are using that home? Their people that go out and say, hey, you might want to clear this area just in case there is a blast fire again?
Yes, absolutely. The, the staff, my staff goes out and does the maintenance. They, we can go out on complaints and they also do an execution on that. We can look to address that at a, at a better level, especially in the weeks. And really doing that public outreach will help, obviously. Once we start moving forward with our warning system, our very large media release when we do that, I think that's gonna be a perfect time for us to give the information off.
One other way we're gonna be able to do that is we're gonna be updating our local hazard mitigation plan. And mitigation is basically prevention of our priority hazards in the county. And those kinds of projects will be in there. And that plan is approved by the boards, public information projects, weed abatement projects, fire hundred-foot defensive space projects will be in there that you guys will actually...
Obviously, we've faced in the last couple of years, evacuation, we were okay having a situation here with a fire. Do we see how other counties are, what other counties do to prepare, to prepare for emergency situations? You know, according to schools, we always have fire drills, parade drills, food drills, something like that. So, you know, what are other times we're gonna do, you know, that will benefit us, we'll look at? I mean, that would be very cool if we could.
Yes, absolutely. And that, that is our goal, to make sure we, this was an I O for, for me, I O, how we operate at our levels. And we are challenged, as I said, unlike other counties. And we do have our own special challenges within the county. What we saw in Crowe, support, Cal Fire has reached out to help me to come up with different answers for that, how we can get through that, how other counties are doing it. Working with different fire chiefs locally. Great support, obviously, from Sacramento, Sacramento City, Sacramento County. We need great support all over and they are willing to help us with everything. With that DWR and mitigation stuff that we're working on through the grant, we'll see a lot of that. A lot of that will come forward.
Well, and then at my level, I work with all the surrounding emergency managers, attend their trainings, attend their, their exercises. And so we share best practices all the time. So we'll be implementing things that I've seen happening in Sacramento or in Yon County and put them in through our planning, training, through our whole program.
This chair member reports after that. Brenna, John and I have talked about doing mock exercises. And we're trying to figure out the right time to do that and then we have this real life event. So we have done training with UC City, recently, a few months ago. And we had also one before that, the elected officials training at the place. So it's on our to-do list, this was a really good exercise for us. But we'll definitely put that in our to-do list and we'll share with the board. We'll have a couple of trainings over the next years. I'll commit now, if we do that, we'll do a simulation. What's that? Already scheduled, simulated exercises are key. We're also gonna take a look for further questions, supply the letter of advice. So many counties, cities who have pockets, we'll go through.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd like to, for the majority of the day, control of the mitigation of the power may be great. You know, maybe a group of, group of chief up there will go to put that, put that down on the basis of the grid. And, and also I must commend everybody, I think they've made a fantastic job. Considering the whole state was burning at times, to get resources in here was actually a part. So I think it would have been a really different picture. And I don't know where you found, did you got, under rock?
But yes, you got two records.
So a couple of comments from you too. I'd really like to commend you on the job well done. I was, you know, I was prepared to get this, get started, but you got it well and controlled. And then once the information did get out and it started coming out, and just knowing that you controlled the fire and cleared it out within a short period of time. I look forward to supporting you and thanking others for the resources as well. So if there's anything you need from us in terms of thanking the outside agencies, the other county departments that got involved, which we saw, and then kind of able, and it was, it was great to see all that activity. And especially the private systems, who did jump out. I know Brenna, you called when you got her up there.
Yeah.
I never supposed to hear that. But it's like, knowing that the resources come together right there. And I think this was a good practice exercise and a real, but, you know, knowing that we can handle much larger issues and then have research leadership is really good. Another question I did have is that I know that in Sonoma County, they have a fire supposedly that's being sponsored by the, by the county, I'm not sure which department, but probably the fire. So I think you can take a look at how they're, they're speaking actually forward to the public in terms of how to control fire issues, you know, how to prepare for disaster in general. And they're, they're pretty actively involved. I know there's some CDOs also working with them on that. So maybe take a look at something like that. I think you've had some plans already working with the public. I'd love to see more of like a town hall sort of environment, maybe one per district or something where you talk to groups of public and let them know in terms of disaster preparedness. But we're coming out from the evacuation where everybody was still wondering, which way do we, which way do we drive out? What do we do? And it was a lot of panic involved and then, so that, you know, that panic still is lasting. And we, we noted that as, as the, as the fire was taking place, you know, not only was your phone full, but our phones were filled, right? So we got all these calls and we didn't know, we gotta know what to do with them. And I think it'd be great if we can inform the public if we're doing it. I'm glad you heard about the practice scenarios and we can just share with the public even more. Yeah, thank you, great job.
Fun times, Chief Salwitz. Up there in the Buttes, we used to spray, actually up in the gas line. I noticed there's a lot of grass where the road is. Maybe we can pump a little bit of that, you know, those ice cream. But also one time, the landlord was responsible for a disney. Long fence on their side that makes them do this with them.
Yeah, so that, that disney was in place. This fire moved right to that disney. It was roadside start and it didn't make it past that. And in fact, it burned, it started right at the gas well. So there was a large ground rubble that started and the fire had enough potential anyway. So they, there was some effort made, but yes, I do agree with you, there can be a better moving project for the Buttes, be able to get around, stop that ransom, sorry.
Thank you very much. Why don't you do a guy's band actually for the... We're gonna take a five-minute break, Scott.
Good luck.